This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of Killenly Town Council, and I am calling this special Town Council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, and it is currently 7:00 PM. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Wood, who is absent with notification. At this time, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up is Item 3, Interviews of Boards Commission Applicants, and we have none this evening. So we'll move on to Item 4 on the agenda, Citizen Statements and Petitions. Ms. Claudia, do we have anything submitted?
None were submitted.
Thank you. If anyone would like to come up to the podium, just keep your comments pertinent to things that are on this evening's agenda. And we just ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is John LaBelle, 57 Island Road, Daville, Connecticut. Mister Chairman, council members, good evening. Once again, thank you for all your efforts and service to our community. I quickly looked over the agenda for tonight, and I see there's a presentation by, if I read the right agenda, by a solar company. And quickly looking at it, I noticed that it looks like you're going to entertain a motion to enter into a letter of intent, which part of it says it's non-binding. But if you look at the last page of their presentation, it says that it's a binding agreement that you enter into. And not having much time to look at it, I didn't see where there was an intermediate agreement, so I just bring that to your attention. The other, the other issue is that it was difficult to tell where this is going to be located. And I would encourage that wherever it's located, there be a screening, visual screening, if it's in a neighborhood where it can be seen by not only the public, but by local, local residents. That's all I have for now. Thank you. Surprised you, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, is this your, is this your phone? Donna Brownell, 699 Bailey Hill Road up in Killingly. Chair of Conservation for over 20 years. I just happened to go on the website today to see what's going on tonight. So I saw that was solar development. I don't know what this program, actually, is it supposed to be in the town of Scotland? I mean, I don't understand. And I'm all for using alternative energy, absolutely. We have to get away from fossil fuels and all that, and we're destroying our world. So I'll be interested to see what this is about. But I'm just wondering, has anything, have any other programs been evaluated to see how this would compare with others? I mean, we can get, have a proposal, and we can say, yep, sounds like a good idea to me, and we can approve it. But how, what kind of comparison do we have, and who would be in charge of that kind of evaluation? So Conservation, by the way, we're having a boost this Sunday, Saturday, rather, up at, Killingly celebrates up at the Owen Bell, so stop by and see us.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up is 5 Old Business, and we have none, so we'll move on to 6 New Business. 6A, Presentation by Titan Energy for NRES Solar Revenue Share Program.
Jen, can you bring up the slide? Yep, you're gonna use that right there.
Just make sure the mic is turned on. It'll be a little green light.
Yep.
So I'm gonna just have a brief introduction. So Adam is with Titan Energy. He is the consultant that has been contracted by CCM for energy procurement. So we participate in CCM's Energy Procurement Consortium and have utilized Titan Energy for evaluating solar opportunities. The last one that we looked at was with regards to the landfill, which we did look to pursue that. Adam recently reached out to give us an update on kind of where the solar, where the landfill development was for solar opportunity there. And unfortunately, that one is still, the economics of that are not panning out due to the distance that three-phase needs to be run in order to get to the landfill, in order for that to work. So it has not reached its funding potential. So Adam did bring forward that this is an opportunity the town may want to consider. So I, it does have a deadline submission for the application of September 14th, which is why I wanted to see about getting it to you tonight. Gave you a little bit of time to, you know, kind of consider it, and he can go through, you know, the what, where, and why of this proposal to you, and benefits, and answer any of your questions. But just a little bit of the background on, you know, why are we utilizing Titan Energy? How have we come to utilize that company versus others? And it's really, we utilize and activate CCM's energy procurement consulting services. So they've done that procurement process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate the introduction. Nice to meet everybody. My name's Adam Teff, General Manager of Titan Gen. As Mary said, we're the Renewable Energy Procurement Group that works for the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. They have an energy purchasing program. It's fairly all encompassing. They put out an RFP about five years ago in 2018 to select a company to represent Connecticut towns, help you navigate through these programs. We were selected, and we actually just had a five-year extension certified with CCM. So we're gonna be, you know, in this, this position for a while. We've worked with about 40% of the towns here in the state, Town of Killingly and the Killingly Board of Ed being one of those. So some supplemental material in the presentation includes snapshots of the projects at the public schools. There were four in total. We also ran a savings analysis recently, just so you could see that, you know, those projects are doing exactly what they were supposed to be doing. They're producing, you know, positive economic benefit for the town, or for the Board of Ed. Just to expand a little bit about other work that we've done in the town to give some context. So we did evaluate the landfill as an opportunity for a solar project. Unfortunately, it's quite a distance away from three-phase power, and even if you could run it there, that part of the power grid is very, very congested. So there have been a lot of projects in this part of the state over the last couple of years. There's just not enough space left to accommodate all that power going back to the grid in this area. So it really puts a damper on the economics. It would, it didn't produce a positive economic benefit for the town. So we've tabled that indefinitely. We've also evaluated in the past rooftops here in the town, but they're just, you don't really have a lot of rooftops. They're not very big. So this was part of the, the larger project that we did that originated back 2019 that included the schools. And we did the DPW garage here in town, but that was really the only project that was viable at the time. We've also evaluated battery storage for the wastewater treatment plant, but the economics weren't really great on that. And it's a new technology. I don't, you know, I think the, the idea was, you know, let's see other towns do this first, and maybe we'll put our feet in the water at that point. So I feel really confident, being in this position for the past five years, looking at all the town buildings, all the opportunities, try to figure out how we make the best use of these funds that we can, that, you know, we've, we've done that. So here we are, you know, in 2023, with a new program that originated in 2022. You'll see the four letters, NRES, kind of throughout this. That stands for Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions. Basically, it's a public policy measure that's in place to incentivize solar. There are different, you know, categories of NRES. There's different groups that are incentivized in certain ways. There are carve-outs specifically for municipalities. So that's really what I'm focusing on here, which, you know, this, maybe this concept has, has come up before in front of you folks, you've heard of it, but basically like a, you know, a form of large-scale off-site solar power gets sold to the, to the grid, and there's a financial benefit that a town can, can share in that. Again, it's a public policy measure that, the idea is, if solar developers want to come in and build big ground-mounted arrays, they can do that, and they can participate in the incentive funding, but they have to have a municipal cosponsor that is sharing in the revenue from that project.
Adam, if I can, the municipal cosponsors, do they have any financial output that the municipalities have to put in to be a cosponsor, or is it just that the municipalities are receiving revenue?
That you're receiving revenue. You don't have any credits to buy, you know, there's no credits that go to bills and things like that. It's really, this is a means that the state legislature created to help towns participate in these programs. So it's not just, you have solar developers and landowners kind of keeping all the benefits of it. Sure.
But who is paying the bill for the install? Because that's a huge cost. State?
No, 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 no. So, yeah.
Looking at the potential revenue and the excess, and then the cosponsor?
I'll get there. I'll get there. Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, totally. So, so again, yeah, the idea is make sure that these benefits are equally spread amongst, you know, ratepayers that, so it's not just confined to the solar developer and the landowner only. The reason I reached out to Mary over this last week is because within the NRES program, there's, it's a competitive program, and I'll explain the mechanics of how it all works, but there's a list, the Distressed Municipality List, that's a list from the Office of Economic and Community Development. Killingly has not been on it in a couple of years. So I, you know, I'd kind of been a little bit out of sight, out of mind, because the program has become so competitive that the only municipalities that are having any success in the program are on that list, because you're given, you're given some advantages in this program that, say, the Town of Greenwich or Avon or whatever, just don't have. What's new or different is that they're now allowing us to look back onto any town that was on within the last five years. Town of Killingly, last time was 2019, so alarm bell went off, and I said, okay, I'm gonna reach out to Mary, because now you actually have a chance in this program. For whatever it's worth, I do work with the Town of Greenwich, and I've been trying to get them into the program so far. It's, it's just not gonna work, because the way that projects are selected, distressed municipalities get preference. So the way the program works is a solar company would, you know, they, they have their land, they want to build their project, they want to sell power directly to Eversource, and there are a lot of other companies that want to do the same thing. So it's a competitive bidding process where you submit your project, you submit the price that you can pay, or that you could sell power to Eversource for. There's a limited pool of funding. They go through, they select the lowest-cost projects first until the funding's gone. So the solar company owns the array. They sell power directly to Eversource, so there's no involvement in the town on that side. The landowner, again, they're just collecting rent from the solar company, because for allowing them to use their land. And the revenue share is if, you know, the solar company makes $100, you know, top line. This isn't like bottom-line stuff, but top line. The town will get 10% of that. So that's where the savings come in. Again, a lot of times I get people looking at me, they're like, you're gonna give me money for nothing? And this is, this is the state of Connecticut being creative in ways that help distressed municipalities get some of the benefit of these projects. Because before, in the old program, there was no distinction, and you had a lot of towns that were doing, you know, just fine. They're getting a lot of the benefits from the programs. And, you know, I think the state wants to make some changes that, you know, helped, helped kind of steer some of those funds in a different direction. So why don't I stop there quickly? I mean, that's, that's the overview of how this works. The, and as noted too, by folks in the audience, the array is actually located in the Town of Scotland. So there's no, nothing's gonna get built in the Town of Killingly land, so there's no P&amp;Z, there's no Siting Council issues there. You know, the way that this program works, so this is a CCM program that, you know, was created by CCM and Titan. The way that we've gone about it is, you know, we've secured land positions throughout the state. We bid those projects out to solar companies. The ones that can offer the best deal, they get the rights to that project. We match them with the town based on, you know, the town's usage and how it fits into the overall scale of that project. So, you know, not only was the CCM competitive in the sense that selected Titan, but that's how, you know, we've gone about creating this program. It's an easy opt-in for municipalities to, to get access to a project. You know, the alternative would be, you'd have to go out and find land, you'd have to go out and find a solar company, put the deal together, and, you know, that's, that's kind of a heavy lift for a town to be able to do all that. So that's why really the program exists in the first place.
How many municipalities cosponsor, like the Scotland one? How many municipalities would be potentially with that? Is it just Killingly, or is it multiple municipalities?
So you'd actually share this with Putnam. Yeah. And, you know, the Town of Putnam Attorney and the Town of Killingly Attorney is, is the same individual. You know, so we got a little bit of a leg up there with that contract being negotiated already. And just to speak to the, the contracting process for this, the non-binding LOI, that allows us to submit the project into the program for selection. Following that, there's a definitive agreement, as we'll call it. That's really the binding agreement, which sort of consecrates this deal. That would need to be executed by November. So, you know, we have some time there. It's really at this stage of the game. We want to be able to submit the project into NRES, hope we win, obviously. And then, following that, be able to execute that binding agreement. And I don't, I don't know if the binding agreement was circulated in the packet or not. I mean, we're really not at that stage yet, but...
I didn't circulate that, because we're still in, we'd still be in review with the legal phase, and we haven't gotten through that portion of it yet. So that's, and I didn't know where you guys were going with the LOI, so we're not, we're not to that phase yet.
Yeah. So this slide here, this is really, I just put this together because sometimes, I mean, I'm a visual learner myself, so seeing how this kind of plays out, you know, can be helpful. You know, the off-site concept, you know, Eversource and the state are really trying to move away from some of the smaller rooftop projects, like, not that, not that the ones in Killingly are small. There's a megawatt ground mount at the high school, so that's not small. But they're trying to steer projects more towards larger systems instead of tons of small ones all over the place. So that's yet another reason why the program's put together in this way, because it lends itself more to these bigger, you know, ground-mounted projects. And again, yeah, the electricity gets bought by Eversource. Solar developer has to share the revenue. There is no risk of loss. There is no certain situation in which all of a sudden you could end up owing money to the solar company. There's no hardware to install, et cetera, et cetera. It's really about the most efficient transaction of any of the, the deals we put together. It's really just a matter of being able to collect that revenue every quarter for 20 years. And like I said, the program is insanely competitive. You know, there's a number of different factors driving that. One of those being the fact that energy prices have shot through the roof over the last year. They've come down a bit, which is nice, but they're still high. And what keeps happening, and then, you know, the growing awareness of the program, is that, you know, we're in our second year, so people are starting to figure out what this is. And of course, once that happens, you know, it's just kind of off to the races. You know, people are more interested in sustainability now than they've ever been. You know, so there's a lot of different things, and backlogs of projects that didn't get selected last year coming back in. So, you know, it's a really tight program. You know, we were really successful the last go-around. We got, you know, a six-megawatt project for the Town East Hartford selected. You know, we're working with the Town of Enfield this, for this round. Putnam and Killingly wants to join. We'd be working with you guys as well. You can flip to the next slide.
Any question real quick?
Absolutely.
There was, you mentioned that the Town of Killingly in the last five years was a, just a distressed community. But how did Putnam get selected? Putnam, I don't think they've been a distressed community.
They're on the list, yeah.
They're on the list?
Yeah. There's about 20 towns at a clip that are on the list.
How come local towns, other ones didn't get picked for it? Say, Pomfret or Hampton? Because they never, just, they don't have any, what about Willimantic?
Willimantic's on it. We actually, I forgot. Willimantic, we did Willimantic last year too. So Willimantic is on the list. Yeah, about 20 towns at a clip. A lot of towns that have been on it are, probably have been on it forever and maybe will be on it forever, like Hartford and Waterbury and Bridgeport and West, oh, and West Haven too, we work with. So yeah, there, there's a really small sliver of towns that have kind of come and gone. How they come up that list? I think it's, you know, it's like census-driven, so...
There's a lot of criteria that go into it. Everything from Asia housing stock, unemployment rates, decreases or increases in unemployment rate. There's a lot that goes in on it.
Yeah. Does that answer a question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah. And I'll just do this last slide, and then we can stop for questions, because I'm sure I probably accumulated a lot of questions at this point. So this was the, the specific example. Your allocation of a project cannot exceed the combined town usage. This is just the program rules that allow towns to kind of grab like the right share of, of a project. So smaller towns, less usage, less benefit. Bigger towns, more usage, bigger benefit. So inclusive of the wastewater plant and all the town accounts, that folds up to just about 3 million kilowatt hours. So we could assign a project equal to, you know, 3 million kilowatt hours per year slice for Killingly, at a 10% revenue share. It's about $42,000 a year. And why don't I stop there, and we can do some Q and A?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So you, you already have a site identified in Scotland?
Yeah, it's, it's identified in the packet. And that's, we have site control for three years. You know, it's a really good site. This, one of the reasons this site's really good too, is that we can only go to five megawatts AC, so the, the program cap has a size on the project. And you want scale, if you want to try to be successful here, because the bigger the project, the lower your costs, and presumably the lower you can sell power, the cheaper you can sell power to Eversource for. So this is at the project cap of five megawatts AC. So the last site that we won in March was also a five-megawatt AC site down in Woodbury, and that went to East Hartford. So we're gonna do the same bidding strategy for this, split between Putnam and Killingly. So, you know, should be successful unless there are any major surprises.
What is the current usage of that land?
It's a hay field.
That will open up.
So the entire parcel, and there's a good amount of it that's wooded, so it's about 35 acres. We'd be using about 20.
Is, is this array owned by the town or a private property owner?
Private property owner.
And the benefit to the, so this cosponsor thing, you said 10% of the, so 42,000, is that cutting into the profitability for the, is that part of what the landowner, the private property owner, would be getting? Or is that on, the state is paying that beyond what they're getting?
So that is, the, the landowner, you know, we just have a land lease agreement with him. That's a fixed rate for 20 years. He's kind of more or less like out of the, out of it beyond, okay, we're giving you the rights to use the land. If the, the project sells power to Eversource, again, just using like ridiculously round numbers, if the project sells power to Eversource, you know, a certain number of kilowatt hours, and they get $100 from that, right? That, like their top-line revenue, 10 of that would go to the town.
But the property owner where this arrays, he doesn't get any of that revenue?
He just gets a land lease.
He gets the land.
Yeah. His, his, his financial consideration is a lease for 20 years, so just being paid to use the, use the property.
Okay. So even if they produce nothing, he gets...
He still gets rent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
What does Scotland get? Do they get any piece of this?
No. I mean, they're, they're really not involved. This is a transaction between, you know, private landowner and solar company and the Town of Killingly, so there's no, you know, the Town of Scotland doesn't really get much out of this. For whatever it's worth, though, we tried looking at a parcel, and this is sort of anecdotal, this is like three years ago. We started looking at a project that was owned by the Town of Scotland, in Scotland, and went to public meeting, and town didn't want to do it. You know, there were a million different reasons why. They seemed kind of political to me, as far as like reasoning. But yeah, Town of, Town of Scotland, a town-owned property decided not to do it. So...
But to put this project in, does it need Siting Council approval?
Oh, of course. Yeah. It'll go to Siting Council.
So will the, will the Town of Scotland get, their taxes increased for that?
Is there property taxes on?
Yeah, so...
Because the fields, the purpose, their uses change?
Solar, solar for this purpose is actually by statute exempt from property taxes here in the state. Much like, you know, for the projects that are located in Killingly, the solar developer doesn't pay property tax on those. The only times there's ever a property tax is like, if you are doing like a utility-scale merchant generator project that's outside of these programs, that gets taxed. Like, is it, for instance, there's like a 75-megawatt project in Simsbury that I had a little bit of involvement with, with the landowner. And that is a utility-scale project, and they pay property tax to the Town of Simsbury, but that's a 75-megawatt project done under a completely different program. Town of East Windsor also similar situation. They have like 125-megawatt project in town that, they get property tax for. But again, different program. And that's just another public policy measure meant to make these projects more financially doable. So yeah, long story short, Town of Scotland proper is not participating in this deal in any way. Sure.
So how does the 100% break down of the revenue generated? So you have Putnam and Killingly.
Yes.
That makes up 20%. Where's the other 80%?
No, so there's a Town of Killingly and Putnam split between, so...
So it's 10%, so it's 5% Killingly, 5%?
No, no, no. The, the numbers I put together are 3 million kilowatt hours, which is, you know, the allocation that you can take based on the fact that the town only uses about, well, not only, uses about 3 million kilowatt hours. So it's 10% of...
Of that amount.
Of that amount. Yeah, you're not, you're, you're sharing the array. It's, think of it like you're, like if you had a duplex, you know, you're kind of co-tenants on it.
So where, where does, where do the towns come into play? I mean, do you need the towns to be able to build this array? Or can you just build that?
We can only build it if we have a municipal cosponsor. And we can only actually do this and really win in the NRES program if we have a town that's on the distressed municipality list. Hence why, you know, the last towns we were working with, East Hartford, Willimantic, Enfield, Putnam, you gotta be on that list in order to win. Because what happens is, when you bid into the program, there's a 20% bid preference applied for distressed municipalities. So that means if you bid in at 10 cents per kilowatt hour, like you have two towns that bid the exact same, let's say, Town of Killingly over here and Town of Greenwich over there, you both bid 10 cents, Killingly would be evaluated at 80 cents, oh, no, at 8 cents, excuse me, rather than the 10, because you get that 20% bid preference. So you have a 20% advantage. It's like, you know, you're, you're given that boost, and because the program is so tight, you need every advantage you can get, and that 20% is a big one. But, you know, to your point, this project and projects like this can only get into the NRES program like this when they have a municipal cosponsor. So without a municipal cosponsor, this project doesn't really have all the pieces that it needs to be successful.
How many megawatts will that produce? How many megawatts will that produce?
So this is a five megawatt AC project, six megawatt DCs. This is probably going to be about eight and a half million kilowatt hours. Putnam's a pretty big town too. They have wastewater plant, the schools, the town, they're all, they're all in it.
So without Killingley and Putnam, it would be hard to, or you said Willimantic's tagging on with this as well?
So we did Willimantic last time. I mean, we have other municipalities that we're working with, like the town of Enfield, they have eight million kilowatt hours, you know. I mean, the CCM program, you know, we could fill this array with a distressed municipality. But, you know, we've worked with Killingley for a long time. You know, we've had really good results in the past. So I, you know, since this became available and the fact that, oh, 2019, we can look back now. Mary was my first stop and we have to the 14th. So I figured, you know, if I was going to start anywhere in a short amount of time, this would be where I'd do it.
You need a permanent contract by the 14th.
No.
No.
No, just the LOI, just the non-binding LOI, just the letter of intent.
If you look at the presentation, it's November 1st is the deadline for the binding contract.
Right. So all we need to do is do, what we're looking for tonight or what's presented to you tonight for an action item is consideration and action on entering in to the letter of, letter of intent. And that is the letter of intent to negotiate the binding contract. So the letter of intent is non-binding.
Yes.
And then we go into our negotiation phase, which then has to come back to you. In that negotiation period, we're saying we'll be able to complete that by November 1st.
So for our purposes, for our bid into NRES to be acceptable and like we have all our paperwork in order, we just need the non-binding LOI. We don't have to demonstrate to Eversource yet that we have a binding agreement. But the time at which, you know, NRES bids are due, which is the 14th. Eversource takes about six weeks to go through and pick which projects win that round. So that's kind of why we have that six-week window to then, you know, get the final agreements in place and kind of be ready to go. Might they take longer than six weeks? It's possible, but generally in the past, they've taken about six weeks. So that's why, you know, that time, that timeline exists.
So let me ask, oh, sorry, can I go? So let me ask you about, so Scotland gave pushback. They didn't want to do this on their townland. What kind of permitting, do you have to go through a special permit to allow, because it's farmland, right?
So this would go in front of the Siting Council?
Can Scotland push back and say they don't want this? And then you have a big debacle with the Siting Council in Scotland saying no, and then the private landowner? Like what kind of pushback could you possibly get from this?
So I've never had a project get derailed at Siting Council. You know, we like to try to only pick the projects that we think are going to be successful because it's a giant waste of our time and resources if we get a project to Siting Council. Because that's literally like hundreds of thousands of dollars to get a project to that point. So, you know, we like to try to avoid projects that, you know, don't have a good chance. And in terms of, you know, farmland and things like that. So what's interesting about the NRES program is that that carve-out for municipalities also exists for state and agriculture. So it's, we, this business has a lot of acronyms. SAM is one of them, State Ag Muni. Those are the three groups that have carve-outs to participate in this program. So as far as citing on farmland, if you will, there's a carve-out in this program specifically for people like this. With land like this as well. So I'm not concerned about the Siting Council.
I'm not concerned about the Siting Council. It's the state of Connecticut and they're pushing renewables and I understand that. I'm concerned about Scotland not wanting this in their town.
Well, it wasn't, you know what it was?
And are you going to get pushback on them not giving the farmer the permit? That's my concern.
Yeah. So the big problem before was that the parcel that they want to develop had a bunch of houses around it. So, you know, when you start encroaching on residential neighborhoods, that's when people get annoyed. And that's where, you know, you can get resistance. Again, I would never waste my time on a project that I thought was going to get killed in Siting Council. The town government of Scotland was all for it. It's when it went to public meeting that, you know, and I've been in front enough of these public meetings to know that like, you kind of just show up and you get what you get. I mean, you get a lot of people, a lot of different opinions and, I mean, I understand, you know, look, I wouldn't, you know, I understand the plight of people who, you know, don't want to look at solar panels out their bedroom window, you know, when they wake up in the morning and stuff. So like I'm sensitive to that and we try to pick our properties, you know, with that in mind. Because we don't want to fight, we don't want to destroy property values and things like that. You know, this particular landowner is, you know, is mid-sixties, looking to kind of slow down a little bit. It's getting hayed right now, so it's not like.
Has Scotland provided any feedback or has, have you had any conversation?
Yeah, that was my next question.
The town manager actually introduced me to this guy. Yeah, Gary? Gary Griggerberg? Yeah.
Thank you. That answers my concern.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So the 10%, is that a, is that a state mandated minimum? Or is that the minimum that you guys are offering or who comes up with that 10%?
Yeah, I mean, that's what this project can afford to pay somebody.
So that's your, your 10% is your minimum?
Yeah, there's no prescribed means of like, oh, it has to be this, it has to be that.
So 90%? Are you the, are you the, you the construction manager or are you?
Oh, no, 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 so I'm.
You're just a facilitator for the state?
So I run the program for CCM. And what we've done through CCM is put together a land bank of projects like this that we can then take out to bid to select a company to come and build it. And then what we want to do is find the company that most experienced and actually has a good plan to win in NRES. Because we see a lot of developers out there that I think are aiming way too high and they're not getting selected.
So do you own the power? Or is it the solar company that?
Solar company does, yeah. We won't, we don't own the array.
You facilitate the project?
Yeah.
That's how you?
Yeah, through the CCM program.
That's how your revenue is generated?
Yeah, so we're, we work for CCM and CCM member towns to bring projects like this together. We're basically your, like your procurement consultant to make sure that these things get done well and that you have representation in these programs. I don't own the solar array. Titan doesn't own the solar array.
So you sell it, basically? You're, you're selling, you're taking, you're having, you're having a solar company come in. They're going to bid on the project. You facilitate the project and then you guys, you, basically they're buying it off of you, right?
I mean, in a, in a sense, I mean, we have an agreement with CCM for, you know, our services, obviously we don't work for free. You know, so, and that's all covered within what this offer is.
I have a question, I have a follow-up question. So Adam, you know, he asked the 10%. So when you say that that's what this project can afford, is it that? I just want to clarify. Do you, when you have the developer bids on a parcel like this and gives you the economics as the procurement consultant, are you, do you evaluate that? And is that where you come up with that's what this project can afford in order to be able to put it into the NRES? Would you give us a different number other than 10% if it were a different project? How does, you know, how does that number get determined? Is it, what evaluation gets done on that submission in order to bring it to the municipalities for what is that potential revenue?
Yeah, sure. So I mean, there's a lot of different things that go into kind of figuring out like, what does this project need to be successful? Because if you can't win in NRES, it's really all for nothing. And with how aggressively you have to bid into NRES, we just have to be mindful of like, all right, what are all the project costs? Who needs to make what in order to be happy and for us to win in this program? Because you could theoretically bid more aggressively into this program and maybe kick this up to like 11% or 12%. But then you might take yourself out of the running of actually being eligible to win in the first place. So what we have to do is we have to, and this, you know, part of what I was tasked with was finding the very best parcels that I could. Because it all starts with the land that you're putting it on. If you're putting it on a bad site or expensive site, you're just, you're fighting an uphill battle from there. So what we look for is, you know, we have to strike, be able to strike a reasonable agreement with the landowner. Because if the landowner wants a lot, then all of a sudden the project starts to become expensive. So we need a good deal from the landlord. We need it in a part of the state where the power grid's good, you know, much like, you know, we faced before in landfill. If it's in a bad part of the grid, that means it's going to be expensive, it's going to hurt the economics. So try to find a parcel in a good spot. We want it to be as big as possible because the more scale you have, the lower your costs are. You know, and we know kind of where you need to be when you submit into NRES in order to be successful. So the criteria we give is, you know, the market for these projects is about 10%. I've seen 8%, I've seen 12, I've seen kind of all across the board. So we want, you know, for the customer to be able, for this to be worthwhile, to be in the 10% range. So we craft our requests around that. You know, we bring the land, put the idea of, okay, if you can offer a 10% discount to people, you know, can you bid into NRES at this value and be successful? And the responses we get back are, you know, kind of vary between, you know, here's our cost to build and here's where we think we need to bid in order to meet a 10% discount. So we want the company that can meet that 10% discount, do it in a way that satisfies them and also is done in a way that can win in NRES. If you can't check all those boxes, then your project has a low probability. And there are always factors, NRES, we can't control, like, I don't know, I mean, I only, I know Waterbury. You know, Hartford is bidding into this round. I believe Meriden as well. You know, so I know for sure, and then, you know, the activity that we have, there's more capacity that's going to get bid into this than there is available. So, and it's always been this way, it's always going to be this way, I think. So, you know, part of our guidance here is to say, if you want to participate in this program and do it in a way that's still is like financially, you know, that makes sense for you guys and have a chance of winning, like, those are the sort of projects that we want to put together.
So I had a question about the land itself, like what is it zoned? Is it?
So zoned is ag.
And once you put those on? Once you put those on, does it change?
It would stay as ag.
It stays as ag. So there's no conflict with their planning and zoning committee? Because I feel very uncomfortable with undermining another local government. So yeah, that's what Patty's saying, I'm in agreement with that. So I want to understand, if they don't want it in their town, I feel very hesitant to sponsor something in somebody else's town. I wouldn't want someone to do that to us.
No, let me just clarify. So when it went to the special town meeting, again, these are residents that come out, right? And the pushback on that project was, it was a bunch of residential neighborhoods surrounded by it. It wasn't a pushback, the town government was all for it. It was residents who, and I completely understand it, you know, who, you know, voted it down at.
So it was the location?
It was the location.
For that example that you gave, it was about the location. But this specific project, you said that the, you shared that the selectman was the one that steered you to have a conversation with this property owner. I guess, I guess, what I'm hearing from the council is, is whether or not, I think people want to know whether or not the town of Scotland government has had any concerns about having a large-scale solar development in their community. If, is it going to violate their planning and zoning regulations? Is there, I know it has to go to citing, which means that when it goes to citing, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't get handled by their local planning and zoning. Gets handled by the Siting Council. The local planning and zoning can submit comments and concerns to the Siting Council. And the Siting Council can make them part of the requirements for the site. But it's not, it's not permitted by the local planning and zoning on a Siting Council. I think that's what I'm hearing is whether or not there's, there's a concern here as to whether or not there's concern at Scotland, in Scotland, as to whether or not there's angst over this project being proposed to other communities.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have a response to that or not.
No, I mean, you know, my response to it is, you know, we try to pick the sites responsibly. And in my mind, that is, you know, we're not, no tree clearing. Make sure that there's, you know, you're not in a, trying to plunk a big solar array down in a residential neighborhood. You know, the venue for folks to kind of support or oppose projects is the Siting Council. And I mean, this is a private landowner in a town who's, you know, looking to monetize his land and keep it, have it so he can retain ownership of it and not sell it so it can then be developed into, you know, whatever, it can be developed into houses or whatever. I mean, I'm very pro landowner rights myself. And, you know, the venue exists to, you know, the Siting Council to address these issues. So, I mean, I guess that's my response.
Well, you said this is not property taxable. So why would Scotland in their right mind give up prime farmland for zero benefit? I mean, if this was coming here, no way. I mean, we're looking at, we talked about a data center. And the value of that property, because it's under the power lines, has a massive amount. And if, I can't understand Scotland saying, we'll let you build it, we'll let you take prime farmland. The state agriculture people are saying, go ahead, take farmland. But Scotland gets zero. I cannot understand.
My understanding of Scotland would still be getting property tax on the land itself.
But they won't be getting any benefit from this solar array.
But they don't get any additional, they don't get property tax on the array. They're getting property tax on the land.
Right, but the farmland, when you, whatever that criteria is, is already a lesser.
Yeah.
You're not paying like a house lots. You're paying for farmland or forest land. So yes, it's a, it's a lower, and then again, you're building a, I would call this an industrial development and the value of that, the town is getting nothing for it. I, I don't know.
Plus, my question also would be to follow up with yours is if the, if you're moving this from a non-residential area to a, to a farmland area, quote unquote, you know, better position, better field, you know, better location, why wouldn't Scotland want in on the 10%?
They're not on the distressed municipality list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, they don't meet the threshold on distressed municipality, which is likely why that component would be.
Yeah, but still, this puts Scotland.
They would still receive the same level of property taxes likely that they're currently, currently receiving on the land.
Which is nothing.
They're just not going to receive added revenue from the solar array. But they're not being harmed with regards to a reduction in tax revenue from, from the land.
It's not adjacent to a road?
Maps right there. I mean, it's, this is about as tucked away, you know, as you can get. I mean, there's not a single house short of, you know, the landowners. You know, the town of Scotland is really no, no worse offer this. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to speak for the town of Scotland. I'm kind of here to focus on the project and the town of Killingley myself. So as far as, you know, what their position would be, I mean, you know, in my view, to wade into like the, you know.
Are those, the blue lines on each side of that, is that a road or is that a river?
It's waterway.
Waterway?
Yeah.
The access to the property, is that the green line that comes in from the right to left?
So the property access is from the north. If I had my computer open, I could give you a better, better view of it. I can describe it a little better. I might probably need a new prescription at this point with my glasses.
It shows access path.
Yeah, that green line might be the.
Through the middle, the green lines, the interconnect.
Yeah, to the free phase.
The grid. So the interconnect, that is, are you connecting to the line on the road or is that where the transmission lines are?
So we go to the line on the road.
Yeah, so it looks like the road is all the way to the far right-hand.
So here's the road over here.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's tucked pretty far off the road.
Yeah, and again, I mean, this is, we very, very mindfully select sites to avoid conflict with people.
How far back is the, the property line? It says appropriate property line and setback, but how far is that about?
Should be at least 100 feet.
Yeah, it looks like they're pretty out in the woods.
So again, I mean, it's done with the intention of, you know, being a good neighbor, being a good steward of the land, not ruffling feathers with folks. You know. It's private, I mean, at the end of the day, it's private property, I mean, it's, isn't that what, we all enjoy that to some extent, right?
That was my biggest concern, that the, so I understand he has a land lease, but I, I was just curious if the property owner was getting some benefit to this array too.
Yeah, he's going to get a nice, he's going to get a nice, a nice annual lease.
And the town is still getting what would be their normal property tax, they're just not getting a boost because it's exempt under this type of plan, okay.
Correct. And then again, that exemption is by statute, this isn't, this isn't, you know.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, it's not like, yeah, I mean, if it, if it was, if, I mean, nobody wants to pay taxes that they don't have to pay, right? Raise your hand if you do. So, you know, that's, again, we're just going by what's on the book. And if the, if the project had to pay property tax, that $42,000 at Killingley would probably be like 10.
And it wouldn't be beneficial for us?
Correct, yeah.
Now, another comment you made, that with all the, the solar arrays that we have in town, you did a savings analysis. I was at a Board of Ed meeting a couple of months ago, and that question was asked, and no one had any idea what kind of savings they were getting. And it was asked on a couple of subsequent meetings.
Nobody, for the record, nobody had asked me to do this, I just did it.
I don't know where, if it was out there, but, I mean.
I literally just did this a week ago, so that's probably why.
It's in your packet, Ed.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a, there's a separate slide that has, that has the savings on it for the towns piece, and then locations of the schools, which he did share to the Board of Education just this last week.
Yeah.
So, he hadn't been asked that, to prepare that, he just prepared that and shared that with them last week, so.
Yeah.
Because it was, I was, the comments at that meeting, someone should have said, well, go to you, and that never came up, it was like, zip, nothing. So that, that's why I'm throwing that out, that, that's what I got, I'm sitting at.
Yeah, so I went through, so what I did to put that together is I went through, and this was a phased project, so this, we originally, let's go back to 2019, so, a number of the projects had phases that had to get built, just by the way, at the time, the incentive programmed work, it was a real nightmare. And the largest of those arrays finally just came online. So now that everything was finally operating, I went through, pulled all the data from the arrays from when they got built and became operational to the present, went and cross-referenced your cost per kilowatt hour from Eversource for the same period, took the savings based on the, what you pay for the power, and put that together. So it was, you know, a good three-year look back on some of them recently yet.
Good, I mean, I, because you get one statement, and then I don't.
Yeah, and look, I mean, I, you know, it's good to have these numbers refreshed periodically, just so people know, you know, what's going on, and, you know, I know there's been some turnover with superintendents and some other stuff.
Well, that didn't help the situation either.
Yeah. Yeah, so I figured now, now that all the projects were built, it was a good time to just say, okay, start to finish. And then the other thing I put in there too is just the results from this last year. Town of Killingley participating in the CCM Energy Procurement Program, just on your, compared to your costs to Eversource with third-party, because as most, everybody knows, I think, Eversource's cost went sky-high this last year. So, you know, we saved the town over $100,000 this last year with the CCM program, just for your supply portion alone. So I'd like to think that, you know, we've got a good track record doing good work for the town, trying to bring good ideas to the table, help trim your costs, help you be more sustainable, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what that, that calculation is, and the, the top box is just your, just traditional supply, right? So you're buying Eversource power, there's a supply cost associated with it. We go out to the market with third-party and help navigate that piece of it. And then the bottom box is the solar. So, I think, you know, generally the results for the town have been pretty good.
One other comment, like, whenever there's been an issue with siting council here, P and Z has had to address those issues. There was a component from the developer that we got money for the P and Z folks to take a look at the project. Is that going to happen in Scotland? Are they even aware that their, that their P and Z is going to have to look at this?
Who, Scotland?
Yes.
Not, well, look, I mean, the first selectman literally introduced me to the land, the landowner, so, you know, as far as does, does the P, you know, I have not, I have not reached out to the P and Z folks in the Town of Scotland.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just looking at, I've seen when the power plant, that not happened.
But that was a natural gas plant, right? I mean, that was, and there was a lot of residents that were.
You know, and a huge issue.
Yeah. And on Killingley town property, right?
No.
No, that was private property.
Private property? But why, I mean, sorry, the actual dirt was in Killingley, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, different, different situation. That was a controversial project from the start.
Yes.
Yeah. To say, to put it mildly, I'm sure.
So what, what benefit would the, the town manager or the selectman come into you for his town to put a 30-acre solar field in his town?
We've worked with the Town of Scotland for a long time, we've done some rooftop projects in Scotland, they're CCM Energy folks, and I think he wants to see renewables, renewable projects like this get done, and, you know, he was kind enough to facilitate the introduction.
So he's saying he doesn't want houses there, possibly, no houses, so we're, solar.
Solar fields up there, yes.
Well, look, I mean.
I, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, at the end of 20 years, the landowner still owns it, it's.
So what happens to the field after 20 years with the sustainable, the panels of 20 years?
Yeah, you take the system down, take the system down, and you start over with whatever might be next. As far as the slides go, I think I just had some pictures of, yeah, the, Killingley Board of Ed is actually one of the most green districts in the state now, which is, I think, pretty cool. You know. There, there are a lot of towns that have not been as proactive as Killingley on this front. And it couldn't be at a better time too, because the town and the Board of Ed's energy price is about to go up 30%. So having these arrays in place is going to prove to be a pretty good thing. Yeah, there was just one more, and I apologize on this one, there was a typo on my part. Where it says 919, it should say 914, so that was my fault. But the general timeline from an administrative perspective for the town is non-binding LOI by the 14th, definitive agreement by the 1st November, and that's the extent of the paperwork.
So we're talking 10%? But what is the dollar amount? That 10, the 10% is there, but the dollar amount is going to be a floating number, a floating amount?
No, so it's, the NRES program, you have a fixed, when you bid into the NRES program, you're saying to Eversource effectively, we'll sell you power at a fixed price for 20 years, that price is X. So there's, there's no market fluctuation, there's no up or down, which is good, because it de-risks that for everybody. You know, there's no situation in which all of a sudden, you know, the cost of power plummets, and now this revenue share agreement you had is.
Yeah, that's going to happen.
It's nil. So, well.
Sorry, but.
I mean, look, it goes up, look, the reality of power prices is that they go up and down. Do they trend upward over time? I think generally they do, I mean, the poles and wires charges from Eversource do not fall. So, but, the, the NRES program is a, so every kilowatt hour that gets sold back to Eversource is at a fixed price. There's no market fluctuation with the price power.
Now, was there a fluctuation in actual production due to cloudy days, rainy?
So that's all factored in, yeah, so that's, that's factored into the financial model. We use local weather data from the nearest airport to calculate that out. And that's, you know, investment-grade information that helps put together these, these pro formas for folks. And the, you know, the risk is really on the developer, because if they can't sell power, they're not making money. If, if they're not selling power, you guys aren't getting that, that money coming in, which is obviously not good. But these projects, especially these big ones, I mean, they are very, very critical that they perform well. There are banks and investors that have all sorts of teeth in, into the deals here that make sure that the array produces.
So I have one more question.
Sure.
So you said how many acres, I'm sorry?
So the, the actual acreage for the project's about 20 to 25.
Now, I know with solar panels, sometimes you have to take down trees.
No trees.
No trees are coming down.
That's one of the best things about this site, there's no, the site work is basically, you know, no trees coming down, not encroaching on wetlands. You know, those are the kinds of things we like to avoid.
Even for the interconnect? Because it looks like the interconnect's going through a wooded area.
Yeah, I'd have to double-check, if we have to do like a, like, some clearing there, I'll, I'll just double-check on that. But the, the footprint of the array itself is.
Already cleared, man.
It's already cleared. Again, there's not like food being grown, it's, it's hay.
Yeah, I wasn't asking to put the panels in, but I know with solar panels, because we have a lot, I have 72 panels, and they're on brackets in my yard, unfortunately, we had to take down a lot of trees. So that's what I was asking, in order for that array to get maximum potential, do you need to clear any of the trees around?
No, so any shading would be called, would be called out there, yeah.
Okay. And just for the record, we were clearing for the house anyway, so it worked out, we didn't take them down unnecessarily, but I know we had to take a lot.
Yeah, I see that sometimes, when I'm driving by neighborhoods and people are taking, you know, good trees down for solar, you know. We try to avoid that, if we can.
Ours were dead.
No judgment, I'm not judging you.
So I just had a question, and I think I just lost it. The, well, one of them was, did Putnam already sign the letter of intent?
Yeah, and, and their definitive agreement.
And, and so you need us to do it, but it seems like Scotland's the one that's getting the whole, the baggage, and getting really no benefit out of it.
I don't know if it defines as baggage, I mean, what baggage is actually occurring for the town?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're the ones that are holding the product, pretty much, but they're only getting, the landowners are the only ones that's getting the real benefit.
Well, I mean, he owns the land, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, it's private property. I mean, it's, I'm not trying to argue the point necessarily, I'm just, I just want to remind everybody that this is private landowner, I mean, this is, you know.
He could sell it.
Scotland's not being harmed by it either.
Right, he could sell it into one-acre house lots if he chose.
He could.
I mean, he's the one breaking his ass to hay it all the, every year, I mean, like, he's looking to kind of like, you know,
Retire.
Do something, do something different and better, make more revenue from his land than he's currently doing, which I would do, if I were him, I would do the same thing.
Yeah, but now I got to pay more for hay, because it's going to come out in New York.
Ah, this guy's not going to be happy with anything. Yeah, no, I know, look, I mean, there's, you know.
Can we see Putnam's definitive agreement?
I, I gave you the template.
I have a copy, and I've already sent it to our legal, but again, until you guys decided whether or not you wanted to move forward with an LOI, I wasn't going to start legal expenses on a definitive agreement without that.
Well, see, here's the thing too, so the same attorney works for Putnam that works for Killingley, so we can kind of piggyback on that work without having to shell out additional legal dollars. Or at least, I mean, negligible dollars. I know, you know, he'll find something. He'll critique his own edits, I'm sure.
So as far as the timing of this, if this was something where we wanted to table until next Tuesday, which would be the 12th, and it were to pass at that point, that would still put us within the deadline of the 14th, correct?
It would, my, my only, my only thing is, I, I need, you know, the 14th and the 12th, I mean, like, that's a really short amount of time, was we're putting pieces together, like, if I had another town, say like, hey, I want this project in between now and then, I mean, look, I mean, it's, this, once we get the LOI, we can lock in the share for, for Killingley.
You're saying ideally, you'd like to see if they can move forward now?
Ideally, I mean, only just because, I mean, these things are like, we're already putting it together at the last minute. And we're just, we're trying, we're in the process now trying to match the municipalities we're working with, the right project. I think, you know, this is a good fit for Killingley, if you could make a decision on the LOI tonight, again, it's non-binding. You're not on the hook until a definitive agreement is executed. So I don't want to tell you, you know, it's got to be now, it's got to be later. 14th is like, 13th is like too late, right? Because like, this is a lot of administrative work that we have to try to get in by the 14th, and if we, if we whiff, then we're screwed for six months. So I'm trying to just get things, the administrative piece of this figured out, like, you know, yesterday.
If something happened, for whatever reason, we had to cancel next week's meeting, then we would end up missing the date completely.
Yeah.
Are you courting any other towns for this?
So I work with, I mean, the CCM organization basically covers the entire state of Connecticut.
For this project?
No, I mean, I could fill this project with Enfield, but, you know, it wouldn't be the best fit, they're, it's a bigger town, I'd like to get them on a different project.
So you haven't pitched this project to any other municipality?
This is open if you want it.
You've only switched, pitched to Killingley.
Right. It's a good fit, because based on the Putnam allocation and the Killingley, you could both be a really good fit for this project, it's two towns.
Is that, that's because of the usage as per the output of the.
Right, we have to size it so we're, your, your allocation is equal to or less. Well, I mean, we're all, we all share the same interest in trying to get a project awarded in, in NRES. Because that's, that's the hard part.
Same interest?
Yeah. I would say so, nobody, nobody wins on this if the project doesn't get selected in NRES, so.
I'm just thinking percentage-wise.
Oh, I don't get a percentage of the project.
You had to facilitate it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I wish I was, I could classify myself as a distressed municipality and collect checks for nothing for 20 years, but I can't.
I'd like to put my application for that.
Yeah. Distressed person.
So your position is like, kind of, in layman's terms, you're like the broker, correct?
In a sense, I mean, I'm, you know, this program, the renewable energy program from CCM is meant to help towns, member towns, participate in whatever programs come down the pike, so whether that's. Yep, and, and manage the project. So whether it's rooftop stuff, batteries, fuel cells, ground mount solar, this kind of thing, yeah.
I would like them to make a motion that we consider, I need my glasses, sorry, blind. Consideration and action on a resolution to authorize execution of a letter of intent with the Green Skies Clean Energy LLC for Connecticut, Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions Revenue Sharing Agreement.
Now, we haven't actually moved on to that agenda item yet, we're still on A.
No, I made them, I made it two separate things, so this is the presentation, so if you're ending the presentation, it would be whether or not he's moving to item B.
Any more questions, Lauren, the presentation?
I just had one, so Scotland cannot participate in this round because they are not disadvantaged.
Distressed municipality.
Distressed, but they did participate in the first round.
So they were trying to do a different type of project, it was a similar ground mount, but it was done under a different program. This was a couple of years ago.
So it's not even the same program? Right, and little apples and oranges, yeah.
Just was, was thinking sometimes the state will change the rules to get what they want, so that's basically.
Well, I can tell you that the, the NRES program is on the books through 2027. What comes after that, who knows? I mean, these programs only exist because the state has clean energy goals that it's trying to meet. So it has a renewable portfolio standard, they want to introduce more clean energy over time, certain percentages. And short of, sort of like command and control economy style, you know, saying, all right, we're going to. And short of sort of like command and control economy style, you know, saying, all right, we're gonna build this here, build that there. They're trying to create programs that, you know, let private folks operate in it, share benefits with the municipalities and small businesses and all the rest of it. Eventually, the state will meet its clean energy goals. I don't know when that's gonna be exactly, but at that point, you know, the programs presumably would wind down. I don't know when that's gonna be, but NRAS is through 2027.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none?
I just have one comment. Because it's green energy, how are you recycling these used solar panels? Because there's huge piles of them.
Yeah, yeah. So, the recycling component of this industry is getting very, very good quickly because we're finally starting to come around to the point where the life cycle on projects that originated, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, are gonna be coming near their end. So, there's actually a pretty, and I could send you some information about this. There's some pretty good developments in how these, the physical equipment of the sites get broken down and recycled. So, it's getting a lot better. And of course, you know, as you say, technology gets better and better over time, twenty years. I think at the end of this project's useful life, the process for recycling these things will be even better than it is like now. But, you know, that's obviously something that we pay attention to and make sure that, you know, these panels are not gonna end up like in a dumpster somewhere. Well, I can share some information on some companies that are doing some really interesting things because the industry is getting a lot better. And it's just, it's just the market signals for a robust recycling system for these, for these projects. It's just, there were no market signals up until recently. Like, there was no, there, nobody was clamoring for this. And there wasn't, there's no like policy that was pushing for it. So, now that, you know, I'd say the last ten years have really been like when the industry got off its feet, or on its feet, to start actually being like a meaningful industry-building project. So, there really wasn't any need for it before. But, yeah, it's definitely something that we, we think about. I mean, I get frustrated with regular recycling, too, when I hear that ten percent of what I put in the bin actually gets recycled, too. So, it's, I hear you. I hear you.
Well, I'm on the side of the waste committee in town. And not that long ago, our recycling, we paid zero. Now, we're paying seventy-five a ton or some ridiculous amount.
Eighty.
So, and you talk to Willimantic Waste, and they can't get rid of product. Now, maybe specific, this might be a specific, the waste from the solar panels might be a specific product. If it's kept separated, kept clean, maybe that might be. But I'm not looking at recycling. I think that's a problem. I don't know. Again, we're, we're not in that part of the contract. We're trying to get some money out of this, but I, I don't know.
The equipment's not gonna end up in a, like, regular waste stream. It's, you know, it's not gonna end up thrown in a truck and brought to Willimantic Waste. You know, that's, that's not, it's, you know, it's not gonna be that way. Can I tell you exactly in twenty years what's gonna happen to these panels? I can't.
No, I understand, but I mean, I've seen some specific examples with this. I know Coca-Cola, they've got a particular recycling. We want clean pro, clean cans. If we get clean cans, they can go to our facility, fine. But there's only two in the country, and they're having a hard time with that. So, yeah, they got a specific, keep it separate, which we used to do thirty years ago when they first started, separate everything out. That was a great idea, but then that was too much work, so, you know. Whatever, I forget what the term is now.
Single stream.
Yeah, you just put it all together, and everything's contaminated. So, it's just, you have a lousy product, so.
I agree. It's a disaster.
Yeah, it's interesting. So, I mean, I think that's, you gotta look at all of that.
No further questions? I want to thank you for coming forward with the presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me. Hopefully, this was entertaining or enlightening or somewhere in between.
Thank you. We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is six B, consideration and action on a resolution to authorize execution of a letter of intent with the Green Skies Clean Energy LLC for Connecticut, New, Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions Revenue Sharing Agreement.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Ms. George. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Wakefield. Ms. Clorio?
I don't know that we need to go into this any further. You've just spent a fair amount of time discussing that.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Again, this is a non-binding letter of intent.
Well, I don't know. It's, we get all these things on short notice. I'm looking at citing council. I'm looking at a whole bunch of things in the background. I think the people of Scotland are, from where I sit and how I see it. They're getting the short end of the stick. If this was coming to Killingley, there's no way that, I don't think you would even get to this table. So, without having a tax benefit on the product.
Well, if it came to Killingley, because we're, we were a distressed municipality within the past five years, we would be getting a benefit.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could take the product, but the tax, there's zero taxes on, that's, that's what. I have, I have too many issues that I see. We have the state in its infinite wisdom. And then when push comes to shove, something falls on its face, and maybe we may make it, but I'm looking at, taking prime farmland, that's a hard sell for me. So, maybe I'm not looking at, but I think I'm looking at, from my standpoint, I'm looking at the big picture, and I can't support.
I, I have to agree with you because why would, why would Scotland want this? Why would Scotland want this? There's no benefit to them. There's no tax revenue for them. There, all there is is thirty acres of blue, blue panels. How many times do we go around and see this, and we're just gonna continue on to this? And for the sole fact that ten percent, ten percent is, you know, nothing compared to the, what they, what they could be offering us. But there again, to mirror your thoughts, you know, to me, we're taking advantage of Scotland.
Can I say something? So, so I was thinking the same thing, but we also have to understand it's the private property owner's right to do what he wants on his land. And like he did point out, he's an older gentleman. He doesn't, I don't think Scotland's gonna want him to sell his land to a huge land developer and put a bunch of townhouses or condos. At least this protects the land use in twenty years. He could turn it back to farmland. So, I would, I, I don't know. I'm up in the air. But I also have worked through NCOG with Gary, the selectman, and he's very conscious of open space conservation. So, if he supports this, I don't have a problem with it.
Um, I'm, I'm, whoa, it's kind of loud, Jen. I'm, I'm okay with it. I don't represent Scotland. And if Scotland's first selectman recommended this project, that's, that's his perspective. If the people in Scotland don't want him as the first selectman, he won't be there in November. But there's a chance for Killingley to make money, and money means less taxes. So, I'm concerned about the Killingley taxpayers. And if this can bring in revenue, even if it is a smaller amount than, let's say, we're seeing from the data center, it's still money coming in. It means less money from taxpayers. And my, my purpose is taking care of the Killingley residents and taxpayers.
And I'd like to just expound on mine is, is I believe that we're all responsible for our, for our land. And to keep putting up solar field, solar fields in every, every possible location, I think is foolish and irresponsible. I think it was a great idea if we could put it on the, on the.
Land field.
That's a phenomenal idea because it's useless land. But you're taking good land, and you're destroying it for twenty years.
I, I agree with saving taxpayer money. It's, I don't wanna say it's a small amount of money annually. Over twenty years, it's point eight million, a little over. I just am hesitant to, I don't know how Scotland feels about it. I don't, you know, how they, like I say, they getting hung with the solar field. Even if it's not visible, it's still, still there. I, I just, that's, that's my thought.
I look at it from both sides. I look at it from the fact of, as Ms. Wakefield said, we were elected by Killingley residents. We are, we answer to Killingley residents. We don't answer to Scotland or Scotland's residents. As it was said by Ms. George, the first selectman in Scotland is the one that made the introduction for this piece of, piece of land. For whatever reasons, however you want to read into that, I mean, it's, he's an elected official. And I would, I would believe that he's acting in what he believes is the best interest for the town of Scotland. I mean, it's a situation where if some, if a private property owner is looking to rent their land, rather than, especially if someone is, considering he's older in age, farming is not an easy trade by, by any means. And trying to maintain that field and keep going with farmland may be difficult once, once you get older in age. And maybe he decides if this doesn't go through, that he could sell it, and it could become a housing development, and that could put a serious strain on the town of Scotland financially. Because then you're dealing with, you have a housing development comes in, all of a sudden, you have a lot more students attending the schools, and that starts driving up your budget there. I try and look at it from both sides. It's, I think getting away from fossil fuels is the right thing, whether you agree whether solar's the way to go or not. Right now, solar is the most affordable way to go, trying to get away from fossil fuels. And weighing everything, I would lean in favor of this.
I would like to rebut that because if you, if that became a housing development, one, they're gonna have an increase of revenue. And right now, they have, there's, there is zero point zero reason for the selectmen to, to put these guys in touch, unless they're friends and whatever, like you said, you're gonna read into it. But if you take the black and the white, there is absolutely no reason for Scotland to go into this. And again, I understand we're here for Killingley, but we're also here for everybody. We're not just here just for Killingley. We're here for, for everybody collectively. You know, if we keep doing this, obviously, there's some benefit there. Some benefit, we don't know. Tax-wise, they're not getting it. So, the town people, the townspeople aren't gonna see another dime out of this project. All they're gonna see is thirty acres of blue.
So, yes, we're here for Killingley. To me, I don't really care what that private homeowner does with his land. Good for him, but that's between him and his town. I can't do anything I want with my property without going through the planning and zoning. I'm very uncomfortable with another town investing in that decision. That's between them and their town. That's how I feel about it. In terms of the money, this could be a precedent. We could be setting a precedent that we're going to now, they're gonna allow, oh, you're a distressed community. I mean, honestly, what does that even have to do with it? We're all, minus Ed, you know, partially ran against socialism or whatever. Do I care? You know, whether we're distressed or not, let's make our money, let's do our thing as a town and be productive that way. Let's not say, oh, we're gonna get extra benefits, and that town's not gonna have a say. What is that but socialism? And so, I feel like this could set a precedent. Not, it's not just about money. That some other town could say, okay, you're gonna take, a private landowner's gonna take a hundred acres, and your town's not gonna have any say. A sighting council's gonna have a say, and planning zoning's not gonna have a say, and, and we're gonna reap the benefits. I'm just very, very uncomfortable with that. Good, good to the homeowner. He can do what he wants, but that has to do with him and his town.
Any further comments?
Isn't that dictating to the landowner what he can do with his town, though? With his property?
That would be between him and his town. I'm not, have no say in that.
But I'm saying that the landowner and the private company he's contracting with to lease that land, wouldn't that be infringing on his rights?
Not me. That's between them. That's between, can you just start an industry on your land without going to planning and zoning? No.
It'll go to the sighting council, and the planning zoning will have nothing to do with it. So, they're taking, just like what they did here.
Well, it does go to planning and zoning. The power plant did go through planning and zoning. It went through inland wetlands. I sat in on every single one of those meetings.
And there were big complaints that we didn't, we couldn't really vote no, right? Remember that?
You can take that up with our previous town manager. He, our previous town manager misinformed.
That is the history.
I know. But there were a lot of conditions that the planning and zoning and inland wetlands brought forth to the sighting council. And the sighting council takes those into consideration when they're deliberating on something. And if, if I remember correctly, almost every single condition that the planning and zone, that our planning and zoning and our inland wetlands wanted addressed, got addressed by the sighting council.
That is good. Then let them do it. Let their town do it.
And as far as a benefit, the one benefit I can see for Scotland is the fact that you're getting the area less reliant on fossil fuels and more reliant on renewables. And that is a benefit to everyone.
So, keep in mind, our power plant, if you wanted to replace our power plant that we have in Killingley, it would be a million acres.
Oh, I completely understand that. I know.
What we're gonna do, cover the whole, the whole state with, with solar panels? That's our answer? That's where we're starting here.
Mary, how many other projects around the state have, have they done as far as this, this NRAS?
Yeah, to be honest, I don't have those numbers. I don't know how many other projects they have done except, you know, he had mentioned a couple that they were working on with Enfield, West Hartford, and.
West Haven, I believe.
West Haven, I think he had said. They were doing one with West Haven. So, you know, I, I don't have those statistics as far as how many projects. With the, with this project, with this incentive program, the legislation was put in place to move towards these incentive programs was to look to incentivize concentrated larger scale as opposed to doing a bunch of smaller scale all over, scatter it all over this, all over the place, but just concentrate on more focused, larger scale and still provide municipal benefit rather than trying to have municipals, most municipalities, a lot of municipalities struggle with getting the rooftop solar and that type of stuff. Like, like, because a lot of us have older buildings that may have a lot of vegetation around us or may not be structurally compatible with solar and would require a significant engineering investment in order for that to take place, which is what happened in Killingley on the town side. Our library roof was not, was not compatible on an engineering perspective for, for solar. The town hall was not compatible because of the shading components and the small size of the town hall roof. And the wastewater treatment facility, the facility itself, the roof is not, none of the roofs are large enough to really do anything as far as solar capacity. So, the legislation incentives moved in this direction to be able to try and provide a more focused concentration for solar activity as opposed to a ton of little, little projects that are all trying to compete against each other. That's my understanding of the legislative action behind this, behind this incentive package.
Any further comments?
I, I just have a question on the picture of Kiss. I haven't seen these solar panels exist in the field. This is where the kids used to play, that those.
Yeah, the kids actually haven't utilized that space, um, for quite a number of years. When we were looking at, um, the, twenty nineteen, when they were looking at the installation of solar, um, they analyzed whether or not that was utilized space for, uh, recreation for the school. And the school indicated that they hadn't been utilizing those fields at all for, um, kids. Um, there was a lot of sinkholes in that field. Um, and so they didn't, yeah, so they didn't utilize that for recreational purposes. They utilized the fields in the front of the, um, of KAS. Um, so they did evaluate that because they didn't want to displace student activity, um, for solar utilization.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
I am going to do a roll call on that one due to how close I believe it was.
Ms. George?
Aye.
Mr. Grandelsky?
No.
Mr. Kattula?
No.
Ms. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Tick Barclay?
No.
Ms. Wakefield?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. That's three, four, and five against. The motion fails. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is meeting with Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission and Staff Liaison Jonathan Blake.
Did you get some rest after this?
I'm not too perfect. Just bug eyed.
I'm doing well. I don't think ours will be as.
You look young and rested and aren't you the same age?
Yeah, I believe we are. I think, yeah. Um, I, my mind's all from caffeine, pushing the limit on that every day. So the inland wetlands, uh, biggest update that we've had, uh, with, uh, the commission is the change in the membership, the number of members.
We want to thank you guys immensely. And right now we've gotten two great new members.
Yep.
And you want as many people as you can get because, actually it was your aunt, many years ago, Joyce Seber told me, if we all thought the same way, that they didn't need more than one of us. And there's a lot to be said for that. And it's just nice to get all the different insights and the different input and everything from the different people because we all add something different. We come from different backgrounds and perspectives.
So we're at five full regular members. We have, uh, two vacancies for alternates, um, but our quorum's only three now. So we haven't had any issues, uh, with quorum.
Cause that was a big issue to quorum. That was killing you guys. I mean, we're.
It was awful. It was humiliating to, to not be able to act on anything and it wasn't fair to the public. You know, they, they couldn't deal with doing business either. We had a couple of situations where it wasn't a good situation after the fact, like the one on Snake Meadow and a couple others, because time got away and people would try to do things.
Trying to move forward with the project and, uh, you know, that doesn't work too well when, you know, we're talking about wetland crossings.
Yep.
The other hat that, um, this commission wears is the aquifer protection. Typically every five years, uh, we look for its reapplications, renewal of our aquifer protection areas. There's four aquifer protection areas in Killenly that are, uh, level A. The state dictates exactly their, um, area. Uh, we do reflect them on a map. I was going to show the map. I don't want to kill the stream though. The computer is having an issue. So, um, it is on our town website. Uh, it's under our aquifer commission as well as our wetlands commission. It's one map that shows our aquifer, um, areas and areas indicated as having, uh, hydroic soils, uh, or likely wetland soils. Um, it's a guideline for, in regards to that. But that, uh, is due to come up again, um, actually September. Uh, so it was five years ago. Uh, we went through a large swath. So what we do now is look to do a, as staff, do a re-inventory, look at what we have in those areas and then we reach out to the companies and have them, um, re-up their certification.
There's actually surprisingly fewer.
Yes.
Of them than people would think that actually qualify and need review for you guys.
And, and most of the restrictions or considerations for aquifer are common sense. Um, you know, uh, we don't spill oil in the ground. Uh, we, you know, if we have any kind of contaminants going to the ground, those areas are protected, uh, special because they, the, the recharge area services at least a thousand residents. So if there is a spill, there's a notification process where potentially Connecticut Water would turn off a wellhead. Um, so that way residents wouldn't, um, get sick. Uh, so there's a whole process with it. There's no upland review for aquifer. You can be a few feet outside of aquifer and have a spill. But there's a whole process to look at like the plume or, or, um, you know, chase down the spill. So it does happen. Most, like, we have gas stations that are in aquifer zones, um, where traditionally a brand new gas station wouldn't be allowed to go into an aquifer. There's restrictions on tank size. They would have to be above ground. Shell's not going to do that, right? But overall, um, that program has run pretty well. Uh, some other common sense things would be like no floor drains. So it might be a really integral part of an operation, um, uh, in like an industrial space to maybe have a floor drain or something. But that's more likely to have a discharge. Um, so there's other strategies, other methods to controlling spills, uh, curbing buildings and having, um, no cracks in floors and they're subject to inspection. So, uh, we've worked, uh, directly with Connecticut Deep particularly over COVID where they weren't going out and doing inspections, but we would. Uh, so we would go into those industrial things and take a look at, you know, the facilities and not worry about a cold. But other than that, any questions for us?
On the, on the aquifer zones, like who physically makes the determination what the recharge area is?
So it is the state of Connecticut. They, um, have their own process. They typically work with Connecticut Water and engineers and they go out and they, um, do a combination of borings and ground radar to come up with shapes. The shapes can be quite peculiar.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah.
The most recent one is actually just, uh, north of Alexander's Lake. It runs into Alexander's Lake and then comes out across the street from Friedley. It's a horseshoe shape. It only affects some residential properties. So residential properties even would have to be required, not to go in front of, um, us, uh, but to make a notification to Connecticut Water, depending on the type of activity they're looking to do. Or if they have a spill, um, it could be, uh, to notify. Um, so it's a educational process. Uh, but, you know, we don't do the solution is dilution, you know, to pollution anymore. Um, you know, Connecticut doesn't, uh, put out those, uh, diagrams about how to get rid of your, uh, oil. And by the time it dissipates into the ground, you'll be at your next oil change and you can do it again. Um, uh, those were all, uh, strategies adopted by the state in the seventies and even going into the eighties that we don't do anymore. Um, so, uh, it's a, uh, it's an evolving item, but it can be somewhat complicated because aquifer is looking at particular types of, um, uh, pollutants and, uh, looking at like acceptable levels and everything. Uh, and then there's a higher level where we would, uh, there's someone who worked directly with Connecticut, um, deep, their aquifer division versus the town. So there is a threshold depending on the size of the business or the proposed use.
But now, a number of years ago, the highway garage wasn't in the aquifer recharge. Now it is. So they really, is it, do you see much change? Is there a migration?
Yep. So there was a level B aquifer, which is a like preliminary. Uh, we used to show them as a blue area on our map. And then Connecticut Water and the state started the process of just going, you know, uh, throughout county by county, town by town, and changing them from Bs, which was a gas, um, to an A. Um, so the highway garage is still, um, in an aquifer. Um, but, uh, some areas, we saw particularly on the Plainfield line on Route 12, um, almost that whole aquifer shifted from being like right around all jollies and, and all those different, um, industrial uses to just shifting to be out in the woods. It's like Camp Quinnabog area, you know? So, um, that makes it a little easier on our end in terms of potential contaminants in that recharge area. It's conservation land. It's protected. Um, but we do have to monitor those things. And, you know, when in doubt, we'll reach out to the state or work with, uh, our farm marshal and building official. Uh, have been great for calling and asking, hey, I have a spill here. Um, you know, uh, where are we in regards to the aquifer?
Any other questions?
We do have Eric mention this evening that it's time for him to redo the bylaws because how long ago did you say it was?
Yeah, so, uh, in, in nineteen eighty-four, I believe was the last amendment to the wetlands.
That was even before me.
Most likely because they probably followed a state model, which is similar to how their regulations work. Um, we're going to look to update those. Uh, traditionally their annual meeting is in December. We're probably going to do something a little sooner just because, uh, the number of members changed. So the bylaws should reflect that change. Uh, might not be the September meeting, but probably by October we'll have it all written up as staff and we'll present it, um, for, uh, discussion and modification by them.
So should these demarcation lines change, what kind of timeframe do we have to have to alert? Like you have a, a business and they're not in the aquifer.
And then they are.
And now they are. How, how does that, you know, that, that screw, that could really do a havoc with your insurance and whatnot.
So there, there was a, uh, between going from a B to an A, um, there was a grace period. Uh, I want to say at the time it was a year to say when they, um, when it became adopted to then register. Uh, they put some onus on the town to try to identify land uses that might need to, um, register. And then being proactive or reaching out to them, um, some uses like, like a town fair tire, but, you know, depending on the chemicals and stuff, might have to register, but might not have much of a real risk because they're not changing the oil or anything like that. But they're using some solvents and they're using some different things that should be watched. So it's a, it's an interesting process, like, uh, when two thousand eighteen, when we had a lot of, um, or actually, uh, between two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen, we had a lot of ours go from Bs to As. Um, Eric Rumsey, who had my position before, went through and identified those. I worked with him through that process. So, um, you know, we do watch and mindful. I'm not sure how often the state will update those recharge areas. I'm not sure if there's real direction in terms of when they would go and look at those. Um, but it's very dependent on Connecticut Water activating wellheads. Uh, so if they activate a wellhead in an area and now that's serving a thousand homes, uh, or a thousand individuals, uh, they're going to try to figure out what the recharge area is. We have watersheds and everything that cover the whole town for recharge for, uh, individual wells, but it might not be an aquifer.
See like, cause Connecticut Water, their wellhead is like, right down Boudreaux's well in somewhere near there. That's where the, one of the name wells is. But, so where their well is, that has a big determination. A bigger factor than the aquifer itself per se. Okay. All right. That's a little different than.
And that's also why they're being identified though.
Yep.
Because otherwise, there's things out there. I don't know how else to put it.
So one of the ones that isn't like at capacity that I could see potentially maybe being, uh, identified in the future is right behind San Souci, there's a wellhead. Uh, and I'm not sure how, um, much that one is utilized. But the one on Lake Road was the more recent one, um, that got, uh, you know, activated. So it's hitting a certain threshold and it's servicing enough, uh, individuals that, that it becomes that. And that's, that's going.
So that's the old town wellhead?
Yep. Yep.
So that got increased in capacity?
Uh, well, enough that they identified it, that it's, um, potentially hitting at least a thousand or more homes. So, uh, a lot of things could change in that, in that, in that metric or that, um, of their service area. There could have been more homes built. Um, and we've seen some increased density, um, and, uh, from like seasonal homes to year round homes around Alexander's Lake, for instance. Um, so there just might be more area, people in that area.
But then when NTE was coming forward, they said they weren't interested in that well, that everything's going to come from all. So now everything is connected, Killenly, Plainfield, almost to the grizwall line because they weren't going to use that wellhead in the old town industrial. And now they are.
So, so there's nice to have redundancies in terms of level of service. So if there is a spill, say on Lake Road or something, where you have to turn off that, that wellhead and not contaminate the system, individual homes that are still connected could still get water and have a, a, a reasonable level of service.
Yeah, but all, yeah, but all this stuff is interconnected. When they built the power plant, the water line didn't go up that far. Now it comes from the water down south more up north.
Yep.
And then it goes all the way to Putnam when Little River, they never had a permit to, to suck out a little river. And all of a sudden there was a drought six years ago. And then when Tracy Road was built, the Smart Park, they ran the pipe all the way up. So everybody's interconnected and, yeah. So, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, some of it goes to like critical, critical infrastructure, um, you know, and making sure that there's just, you know, drinkable, potable water, um, for everybody regardless of whatever may be the circumstance at the time. But some of those topics or concepts, while they're there and they do influence the regulations, they're not necessarily the concern of, of this commission.
No, no, I mean, well, they do get a little bit, but I mean, you brought this up. So I'm glad you, you know, just to, there's some people would be interested in that.
Do you guys have a lot of projects coming up or nothing kind of simmering?
Um, there's a few, um, but it's mainly individual homes, uh, that are, I think we have two potentially coming up for our upcoming meeting on Monday. Um, but they're mainly individual homes, smaller projects. We've had a few people go through the process of like subdivision and only go through wetlands and then not go to planning and zoning. Uh, we have, uh, one right now that's at the commission level, which is for thirty-two, I believe, residential units, uh, sixteen duplexes. Um, that's a bigger project. Um, but in terms of wetlands, all the wetlands are offsite.
And it's really just a phasing of what was already there from several years ago, near Four Gs.
Yeah, the Colonial Drive area. So, um, that one and then other than that, um, not too much. There's a lot of people sitting on even fully approved subdivisions that I think are just kind of feeling out the market. When you're seeing the interest rates jump so much, um, uh, you know, building a bunch of first time home buyer houses. Although we have a need for housing, um, and I'm sure they would sell, uh, but the upfront costs, um, can, you know.
Well, we're hearing from the developers and it's harder for them to get financing because the, um, the finance market, we don't have a housing study that shows what the actual demand is for housing in this region. And without that, it's hard for them to prove out the, the housing demand. If you build it, it will actually sell. So that's a gap that we've been trying to identify and like I said, uh.
I was going to say, isn't that what we were, we were trying, NICOG to do?
Through NICOG and things like that. So that way we can regionally, we can demonstrate what the gap in housing is and the demand for that housing. That matter equips the developers to be able to move out to the financial market.
They're worth the risk.
That it's worth the risk. Right. That it's, because right now with building costs as high as they are and interest rates creeping up, it is challenging for them to get that back in financing.
And most banks aren't going to go with, you know, trust me, you know, like.
They tend to not do that.
They did for a while and then we had issues.
So not having that piece done is actually starting to affect the builders and the economy for these towns.
Correct. It does.
Yeah. So correct. That does. So the, not having the.
And so the last, the one that we have kind of directed some of our developers to is CCOG, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments did one in 2018, I believe, 2017. They did one and, but that was before, you know, EB's major contract. That was before, you know, a lot of expansions that have occurred with, even within our own industrial park. That all puts added pressure on the housing market. It's before, pre-pandemic, before that added housing pressure market. So it, having a new market study is, is critical. So we, Jill's been looking at how we might be able to get one of those for Killingly specific, but also for the region to be able to better assist our developers that, you know, are sitting on plans already to be able to hopefully generate that additional financing or prove out the, the financial wherewithal for the market, that there really is market demand for entry-level housing, middle housing, because we really have a huge middle housing gap, you know? And so trying to find, trying to fill those gaps.
So, so I have a question. It might be a little off the mark, but it relates. So in our last NECOG meeting, we talked about all those new things they want to do and they want to, so why isn't this their number one priority?
So it's actually in their, it, it was submitted in their annual report and it is on their work plan. And we did include it in the economic development plan, the SEDs plan that was submitted. So it is on their plans. It wasn't incorporated in, because what they were, what they were focusing on was regional services to provide to towns in that latest meeting. This is more of a regional plan to put in place. But yeah, that's, that's definitely a critical plan that needs to be developed and performed for the entire, for this region.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Yeah, John gets to stay.
Yeah, I get to stay.
Yeah. Come on, you've been waiting all day.
We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6D, meeting with Zoning Board of Appeals Staff Liaison, Jonathan Blake.
And we also have Lynn LaBerge, who's the vice chair of our zoning board of appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals, most people know, they deal with variances. Another thing that would be appeals of orders issued by me as a zoning officer, if somebody was aggrieved or didn't agree, they're the first level of weighing whether or not the order was lawful. They have the option to modify it. Wetlands actually has a very similar process in terms of their, one of their regulatory reviews. We have four full-time members. We could have five. Statute requires four members to weigh in on an application. So for instance, if Mr. Anderson was applying for a variance, he would need to sway all four members to vote for it. If one person, one person dissented and voted no, his application would fail. So we have four members, we could have five. So typically you could have that one extra, you know, vote person, maybe you're not going to sway. We try to focus with all our boards and commissions on the educational component. Variances shouldn't just be handed out. They shouldn't be because I want to do this. It's supposed to be a reasonable use, an actual, an agreement, and it's not supposed to be financially based. That doesn't mean somebody can't be making money off the project. It, it shouldn't be, I want 20 extra apartments where the regulations only allow me to have five because I want the extra income. That's not a, a reasonable way of giving a variance. The state of Connecticut, and particularly with case law, says that like 90-something percent of all variances should be denied. Practically about 80-something percent of all variance applications in the state of Connecticut get approved. Typically, people come in and they go to a board with, you know, it's volunteers, it's, it's their neighbors looking at this application and going, you want to go a foot into a setback? Nobody's here. And they tend to move forward with it. We do try to be careful to advise the zoning board not to act arbitrarily, to base all their decisions in fact, to find an actual reason for, a need for a variance. Let the applicant demonstrate that need. We have three alternate vacancies as well. Haven't had alternates in a while for CBA. So we're definitely looking for more members.
And there's also been a problem a few times because one of us couldn't make the meeting, so four of us can't go, the meeting's canceled. And we have had, you know, to delay applications.
Have you ever had any issues where somebody had to recuse themselves because of conflict?
So it's, it's come up before in terms of like proximity and, and sometimes it's a stating on the record whether or not the member feels that they can look at an application and act unbiasedly. There's a perceived bias, maybe I'm, I'm the neighbor, right? And my neighbor's applying for it. So there's a perceived bias that you might say, no, I don't want them to, or yes. There's a strategy with that, or even Halloran Sage has advised before, where you should state on the record any perceived bias. And what I recommend is asking the applicant whether or not they have an issue with said member weighing in. If they say that they have no issue, they have no appeal on that fact. They've waived that. That's been the advice of, of legal counsel. So it's, that being said, if we, four members, we need four members, if one of them can't act, we would be in a kind of a pickle. I'd probably be looking to reach out to the council to get somebody appointed as soon as possible. There is a timeframe where we're supposed to act on an application.
And we did get our bylaws done last year.
Yes.
We did eighty-four.
Yeah. Their bylaws are pretty good.
We will work on trying to fill that one vacant regular position.
And we got this lovely book when we did training in March, it's 530 some odd pages. So at night when I can't sleep, guess what I read?
We're trying to recruit people?
Yeah. We definitely can, anyone that's interested, we're looking to train them. Staff will meet with them one-on-one and try to catch them up on, you know, how to look at these types of applications. They can be kind of interesting. They don't routinely meet every month. We only meet if there's an application. So we might only have three, three or four meetings a year.
Yeah.
But we still have to make sure that you are functional and you guys.
Yeah. Agreed.
It makes things go a lot easier.
All right. Well, thank you for coming this evening. Sorry the meeting ran so long.
Thank you for having us.
Moving on in the agenda, next item up is seven, executive session, and we have nothing. Moving further forward.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.